Any problems? If anybody has problems accessing the meeting, please email Sandy Valene. That's S V A L I N E at S A U fifty-three dot org. And finally, in the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Uh, Anne.
Sorry, Andy, did you hear me?
Nope, sorry.
Present and no one is with me.
Thank you. Uh, oh, it looks like we got April. April, you with us?
Yes, President alone.
Perfect. Uh, Amy.
Present and alone.
And Jean?
Present and alone.
And I am also present and alone. So we'll move on to agenda item number two, minutes of the previous meeting. Um, we have the August eleven minutes that are ready to be dealt with. Um, is there a motion first?
Andy, this is April. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August eleventh, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Amy, I'll second.
Awesome. Is there discussion around those minutes? All right, hearing none. Um, approval of the minutes of August eleventh on a roll call vote. Jean?
This is Anne. I have a couple of corrections.
Okay.
They're just minors, so I probably can just send them to Sandy on page two. Uh, where it says a motion to accept nomination for the, um, for the hire. It just says Anne Bond abstaining, and it doesn't have the reason why. Um, because I put the reason as the, um, the new hire is my neighbor. And then just on page twelve, where there's a roll call vote. Um, it says, uh, Ms. Bond, no due to set money, and that was due to no set money amount. And I'll send those over to Sandy.
Great. Um, so I think it was April that made the motion to approve. Um, can we modify that to approve with corrections?
Sure. I'd like to make that motion changed to be, um, that to approve the minutes of August eleventh, twenty twenty, with the amendments mentioned by Ms. Vaughn.
Amy, I'll second.
Excellent. Other discussion? All right, I'm on a roll call vote to approve with the correction suggested, uh, minutes of August eleventh. Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Um, so yeah, just please forward those over to Sandy and she'll get them in. And we will move on to agenda item number three, immediate business, uh, three A, public comment. We'll try to keep it as close to fifteen minutes as we can with some flexibility in there for the remote setting. Uh, if this is your first time joining us on a remote meeting, um, we will ask our host to go ahead and look for raised hands. So it could be in a different spot depending on, um, how you're connected to the meeting, but somewhere, um, in my situation, it's near my name. There's a button where you can raise your hand. If you would like to be recognized, please raise your hand. If you have called in on telephone and you're not on a computer, um, we will come around at the end after we've hit some of the hands that are raised and open some phone lines. It looks like there's not many of those tonight. Um, so Josh, if you would like to go with the first hand, I think we're ready.
Great. Uh, Tim Girardi, you have the floor?
Evening, everyone. Um, you know, comment from, from my perspective, and I think I emailed, um, a few folks today and, um, brought from my perspective and other parents, um, that I've spoken to, uh, this is, uh, primarily at Hill School. Um, the start has not been, uh, very. We, we have got to get, you know, much, much tighter on, um, how we're disseminating information, login details, ensuring the students are up to speed. Um, you know, this is, um, you know, really just, it's unacceptable, especially given the amount of time that we've had to prepare. Um, you know, since last March to start thinking through and understanding what's needed for the students. Um, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, say that it's a complete failure, but, um, we have a lot of work to do. Um, given the amount of time and effort, um, and I'm not, I want to be clear. Um, I think we have fantastic teachers. I think we have fantastic staff. You know, I really put this on the board and the administration, um, to ensure that things continue to improve over the year. Um, and I'm still high advocate for getting our, our students back in the classroom. Um, and I'm looking forward to the hybrid model, and I'm also looking forward to getting them back full time. I mean, we're still months later, zero cases in Pembroke. When you look to surrounding towns, there are next to no cases. I think I counted this morning. Um, there may be twelve total cases in the surrounding towns. Um, we have got to work to get our students back in the classroom. It is too critical for them not to be in the classroom, socializing, being out of the house and learning effectively. Um, you know, I'll say that for my daughter who is at Three Rivers, um, you know, her experience has been, um, has been okay. Um, again, you know, I think some improvement with getting the learning, um, occurring faster, uh, with her, not just going through the login information, but it's been better there. So, um, that's really my feedback. I'll continue to push, um, until there is glaring evidence that shows why we can't go back to school soon. So, end of my comments. Um, you know, thank you very much, uh, for the time.
Thanks, Tim.
Melanie Camello, uh, you're next.
Hi, um, I just had a couple of comments, um, for remote learning as I got thrown into it today. Um, helping a mom who works during the day, one at Hill School and one at Three Rivers. And I just wanted to say that you guys did an excellent job. It was very easy. Seesaw is easy to follow. Google Classroom, Alma, I found it easy to help them. Um, I think that the staff did an amazing job setting it up. Um, even being thrown into it at seven o'clock this morning, I was able to figure it out and nobody missed anything, so I'll take that as a win. My only comment was, and the child did not complain, was on the fifth grade level. And I know it's hard because of the way Three Rivers is set up with block scheduling. Um, she was actually on the computer an hour longer than I was, and I'm a college student in a nursing program. So I found it a little concerning that she was on screen time longer than I was as a college student. In fifth grade is still technically developmentally like elementary level, and I felt like that was a lot for fifth grade. And hopefully stamina will be built up, and I know it's only the second day, but I just felt like that was a really long time to be on a computer screen. Um, but other than that, I think you guys did a really good job planning it all out. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie.
That concludes the current hands that are raised. Are people that are on a computer or a device? Uh, would you like to go to the phones?
Sure. Looks like we've only got two. All right. So if you've called in and you have a comment, um, your line is unmuted right now. So if you'd like to speak, just state your name and I will recognize you to speak. All right, uh, one last check for hands, Josh.
Unless Mr. Girardi, um, has an additional comment, that is the rest of the hands.
Uh, no, no additional comment, uh, for me, but looking forward to getting into the agenda.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We will move on to agenda item three B, agenda review. Patty, you have anything for us to add?
Yes, please. I need to add, uh, one nomination under number nine, and we do have a need at the end to have a non-meeting regarding, um, impact bargaining. And that's it.
Sorry, I'm just taking some notes.
I, sorry, I do have informational items too when we get to that agenda item.
Okay. All right, um, then we will move on to agenda item three C, give some donations, anything?
Nope.
All right, then three D consent agenda?
We have, um, a request from a staff member, um, for tuitioning their child to the Pembroke School District. And I believe the information is in your packet. If you wanted to have further conversation, we would have to do that in non-public later on. Um, but if there are no questions or comments, it can be, um, dealt with now.
Okay, I will ask the board. I'm assuming we'll want to discuss this in non-public?
This is April. I would say yes, discuss in non-public, please.
Anne, also.
All right, so we'll add non-public section for that. And anything else for three D, Patty?
Nope.
All right.
Andy, I have a question about, um, I would like to find out if we could add busing information to this meeting because we will not meet again until after we are starting hybrid.
Sure, um, I think we can put that as a bullet point under three E.
Thank you.
Anything else before we move on? All right, agenda item three E, school reopening. Um, we got a few bullet points here and we just added one. Um, so we will start off with discussion of the decision-making matrix. Um, I would first just like to ask, well, so if you're listening in, um, in the public, this was brought to us last time around as a rough draft of kind of the criteria that we would use to go between models. Um, if, you know, if things get better, what does that mean towards a full return, um, from the hybrid plan? Or what would cause us to go back to full remote? Um, this was also brought up two days after our last meeting. We had an S A U full board meeting and it was brought up there. And the other districts were going to use this as a jumping off point as well. Um, so first I'd like to ask our superintendent if there, if, if she's received any feedback from the other boards, if anybody has flat out approved it or kind of what, um, what they've talked about.
Sure. So I did, um, put this on the agenda for Deerfield last Wednesday, and the board reviewed it and approved it that night. Um, I spoke to Peter to see about the other three districts, and it's either been on their agenda for review or will be, um, in the next few days, and then he anticipates further conversation at the next meeting. But no action has been taken yet by the other districts.
Thank you. Um, so I guess I'll just open it up to the board members to throw in my two cents just to kick things off. Um, I'd like to take action on this sooner rather than later if people are prepared to, um, but I guess that depends on where this discussion goes. So, uh, let me just go around the room once, uh, to get things started. We'll let everybody throw in their two cents and then we can kind of open it up past that. Um, I guess I'll start with Jean. You have thoughts on this?
Uh, I do. But, um, I wouldn't be opposed to approving this tonight. Um, with the possibility of it being revisited as we, as we move forward. Um, I, I don't believe that anything can be set in stone, so I'm looking at the numbers on here. Um, and I think, you know, where we are right now leaves a question as to where we will be a month from now if things continue the same way. I think leaving numbers, I, I mean, I know these are, are current numbers per. Um, but I was looking at the full return model and the hybrid plan model, which are, um, slightly similar, uh, on, on, on the positive side. Um, so as far as that goes, you know, I, I'd be okay with this. Um, the understanding that we probably will revisit it out in the future some, at some point in the next few weeks.
Thanks. Um, April?
The question is just, um, any overall thoughts?
Yep.
Um, my first overall thought is I'm grateful that the feedback that the board provided seems to be incorporated into the grid that we're seeing before us tonight, and I look forward to digging into it a little more. Thank you.
Great. Um, Anne? Anne, if you're talking, you're still muted.
Sorry. In the, um, in the first category where it says full return, does that say less than one case out of a hundred thousand?
I believe so.
So that means there can't be any case at all in any of these counties that are listed?
Um, I don't know what the population of these counties is, so I couldn't say for sure.
Community spread level, Merrimack, Rockingham, Hillsborough and Cheshire County? So that's saying in all of those counties, they're looking for no, uh, cases at all?
I think you'll, go ahead, Patty.
I was just gonna say, I think it's less than one when you average it out over a hundred thousand people. Um, so if there was one in one hundred thousand, that would be less than one, you know, it could be a point something. Um, and just to, you know, just to review, we took, we took this scale from Harvard Global Health Network. Um, I think the board has to make some decisions regarding whether or not you want to use those metrics when you're making decisions about opening and closing school. Um, and I like what Jean said about reviewing it because you, you know, you may decide that you don't want to use the per one hundred thousand metric. You want to use, you know, a certain number of actual active cases, um, which would be fine too. But we just took this as a starting point for, at least for discussion purposes.
Thank you, Patty. I appreciate the clarification.
Um, Amy?
Can I just make a comment that I am hoping will clarify that point even further? But if, if I'm wrong, I'd like to be corrected. So my understanding is like, let's just say, for example, this is not true. But let's say, for example, there were five hundred thousand people in Merrimack County. Then, and then there were four active cases. That would be, we'd be in the green right there because that would be less than one case per one hundred thousand. Okay?
That's how I'm reading it.
Oops, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Anne. Were you finished or, or not?
Oh, I, I was. I was just thinking Amy because I was wanting to make sure I was reading it that way. Thank you, Amy.
Um, so Amy, I guess that's, that puts you up to bat.
Um, sure. Uh, a few thoughts. I generally feel the same way as Jean and that I'm taking this to be like, you know, etched in hardwood, not etched in stone. So this is going to be a work in progress. Um, I think I would be happy approving it tonight. I'd be happy to make that motion. Um, I, I have one tiny little thing, which is I, at the bottom of page one, I don't think that there is a New Hampshire CDC. I think that should just say CDC. Um, and then when, like, once it's passed, and this is something we're using, it would be really helpful for me if somehow, um, like where we were jumped out at me. Like, I don't know if it would be bolded or what, but like, for example, when I look at this and I see student absenteeism, granted, we're in day two of the school year here, but like, I don't know where we land or in we in the green, the yellow, the orange or the red. So it would just be really helpful as we see it each time if like somehow or another, you know, we could see where we land for each of the categories on the left. Thanks. And thank you for pulling this all together. I also echo April's comments about it's nice to see the, you know, the synthesis of everything we threw at this last time. I appreciate that.
Yep, I agree with a lot of what's been said. Um, the particular item that I guess concerns me, and I don't think I have suggestion for how to change it or anything, but, um, the positive COVID results within the school district. Um, that's one that I would, you know, kind of like to get a handle on, I, I guess. Um, and that's in light of, I'm sure people heard today that, uh, I think it was a Bedford Elementary School had a couple of cases. Um, I'm, don't quote me on this. I'm pretty sure I read somewhere that the Commissioner of Education said that there would have to be like twenty cases in a school in Manchester before they would shut that down. Um, to me, that's crazy. If there's twenty, if there's ten cases in our schools, personally, I don't want those schools open anymore. Um, so that's the number that I'm kind of keeping my eye on anyway. Um, and then I guess kind of that, what Jean and Amy said, I'm, I'm on board. Um, I don't, I don't, guess I don't even know. I would be okay with approving this. I would like, um, and I don't want to make the motion, but I would like the motion to include language that this is not binding, I guess. Um, I feel like this is a fluid situation still, and it's certainly not as up and down as it was in March or April or May. Um, but I wouldn't want to be, you know, I wouldn't want to be bound by vote to this document and then have something really throw us a curve ball and us feel like we can't make a change. Um, so I, I see this as guidance and, and something to give to the public to show this is where our heads at, and this is what our goal is. Um, but if something really hit the fan, um, I think this board still has the ability to, you know, to close schools or open schools, whatever the case may be.
Anne, can I ask a question?
Sure thing.
Um, I wanted to find out what everyone's, uh, comfort level is on community spread level with, uh, Merrimack County, Rockingham, Hillsborough and Cheshire. I, I personally don't feel that Cheshire should be on here. We don't even touch Cheshire County. And then Rockingham County has little bit of area, less, it has less area than Hillsborough County, as in touching Merrimack County. So those are my thoughts. I wanted to find out what others think.
So Anne, um, so what I did, and this is, I would need direction from the board. I took the counties that were actually in yellow in the state so that you could see where those counties fell. And the rest of the counties in New Hampshire were in green. So if you want me to just include certain ones, I can, and then report out where the other counties in the state are at. I can do that however you'd like, but that's why those are there because those counties were in the yellow zone and the rest were green.
So it's not, Patty, it's not intended that we're basing our decision off of all of those counties. They're just there for comparison sake, basically?
Correct. To let you know in the state, yeah, where they are. Sorry, I should have clarified that. Yes.
That's helpful.
So would it be helpful just, that's a quick edit to say, um, you know, status as of this date right above that information, just so it's a little more clear to anyone who looks at the document?
I like that.
Andy, I'm sorry. I've got another question. So the, my, uh, less than one case per hundred thousand, who are those hundred thousand?
So I think that's just the, the average of the population. So like Amy said, like if, if it's going by county. So if Hillsborough County has five hundred and seventy-five thousand people in it, then five point seven five people being the number of sick people, that would be tolerable, if you will. So that's the, that's the part that I'm kind of struggling with. I understand what it's saying, but I don't have a good uh, concept of what the population is of those, of those counties.
Andy, if it's helpful, this is Amy, and I'm just gonna shut my window because my neighbor's mowing the lawn. Sorry about that. Um, I looked up those population figures before the last meeting and, you know, acknowledging the population changes. Um, Merrimack County at the time of our last meeting had, um, a hundred and fifty-one thousand people. So that would be one point five people is one per one hundred thousand, just to put that in perspective. Um, Hillsborough, on the other hand, you know, much more populous, about four hundred and seventeen thousand, so that would be four point two people.
Thanks.
Andy, this is April. Um, in thinking about those numbers, we know that there's data now that, um, approximately four-fifth of the people who have contracted COVID are age sixty-five and over. So I'd really like for our numbers to, um, reflect maybe a population of people when we're reporting these cases of less than sixty-five. So we're really capturing the community that we have, which are schoolchildren and the age of most of our workers. I know there may be somebody who may wait later than sixty-five to retire, but I feel like doing that, um, would really capture the age in the audience of who we're looking to support and protect during this pandemic. Thank you.
Other comments? All right. Does anybody want to put a motion out there?
Before we have a motion, I have another comment. This is April.
True.
Um, one thing, and if it does, please excuse me, I don't see it on here. When we're talking about the cases per one hundred thousand, um, does it on this document define like what the area is? We've talked about that. I know when we generally had a conversation, I believe that some of us have different opinions, but I believe the majority of us believe that, uh, limiting it to our own county would be appropriate. And I don't see that listed on this document, and if someone sees something like that listed, please tell me. Maybe I just missed it, but I think it'd be helpful to have that defined as well.
I didn't define that on the document, April. I didn't feel like I left the meeting having a clear understanding of, of what area you wanted to look at, which is why I chose to just give you the data from all of the counties in New Hampshire. Um, and then, you know, when you're, like you said, it's not, it's not set in stone. And if you, you know, had some counties in red and some counties in amber and some counties in yellow, you could just kind of see where the state was at and make your decision accordingly. Um, if you want to make a firm decision, you know, these are the states and the counties we want represented, and we want the exact numbers. I'm happy to do that if the board wants to make that decision.
I think as much as we can do to define this document makes it easier for us down the road when it's decision time, when we need to move between the models.
Uh, this is Amy. I'd like to make a motion. Um, I would like to make a motion to, um, approve the matrix proposed, um, at this meeting. As the Pembroke School Board's current plan on moving between instruction modes with the board retaining discretion to change it as circumstances merit.
This is Anne. I'll second.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just am a little, the Bedford situation has me a little nervous in terms of April, your comment about like when decision time comes. You know, decision time could come on like the first day of school or the second day of school, you know? And I'd rather be ready with something that I think is pretty good than have nothing in place. And I like that we're all discussing how we can improve this as we're going along.
This is April. I would feel comfortable supporting this if we could define the, the area of the one hundred thousand. And so if we could get that defined, I think I would feel a lot more. I'm not sure, like, is that a straw poll that I need to ask for? Um, just to find out how everybody feels about that area.
Um, can I just ask for clarification, April? Are you saying that, um, you know, you would like it to read something like community spread level in Merrimack County? And then maybe have the Merrimack County number, and then like below that have something like for informational purposes? And then have the Rockingham, Hillsborough, Cheshire?
Um, not exactly. What I'm looking for is just for us to clearly divi- define that less than one cases per one thousand in what area. I'm looking to divine, to define the area that those one, that that metric comes from.
And I, I guess what I'm asking is, do you have a proposal on what area it is?
Yes, I would like to propose that we limit it to Merrimack County.
Okay, because I, I, that's what I was thinking you were saying. Um, and I'm, I'm fine with that if we want to amend that into the motion.
I, I would support that as well. I would like to keep the other county data on there in some fashion. I think it's great information for us to see. Um, you know, if we're on the fence about trying to make a decision to go full return and we can see that all the counties around us are already there, as far as the numbers go, that, that'll help. So, yeah, if we, if we can tease that box out just a little bit.
I can, to keep the box clean and keep the document to a one page, I can add that in page two in the detail. I can just list out the counties in New Hampshire and give you those metrics. It's really easy.
Great.
That'd be great.
And Andy, I second the, um, change to Amy's motion.
This is April. Did Amy make the change to the, to the? This is April. Did Amy make the change to the, to the motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Before we got too much farther to make sure, Anne also seconded the change motion.
Any other comments?
Andy, I just have a quick question. So at each meeting that we have, could the district tell us where we're standing? Like if we were green and says, you know, if the school's able to provide coverage, if the needs of the students are met and the supplies and the necessity, would we be able to get that information at our, at our meeting?
I made note, Anne, that Amy just asked that question, and I should be able to provide that, no problem. Yep.
Sorry, thank you.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you.
That'd be great. And we can, I'll take a note to reach out to Kathy. And we will find a logical place on the agenda for Decision Matrix check-in or whatever. We'll, we'll have it on the agenda early every, every time that we meet so that we can check it out.
Can I just make one more comment before we, it seems like we're heading towards closing out this discussion? From my perspective, I expect, and I hope Patty, you're planning on, every time we look at this, you present it with a recommendation. You know, here's, here's where we are in the matrix, and I don't recommend any change. Here's we are in the matrix, and I think we should go full in person, or, you know, whatever it's going to be. As you well know, we may not accept that recommendation, but it's a great starting point, and chances are we would stick with it.
Sure, I can do that.
Andy, this is April. Just before we vote on this, as a pointed discussion, one of the footnotes talks about the hybrid model on September 14th is dependent on the readiness of the facilities, and then there's a definition of that. I'm curious, can we just do a quick check-in on where we are on facility readiness for September 14th, since that's a footnote?
Yes. I don't, we don't have anywhere else on the agenda, so I guess we can take a second. Do we want to check in with Patty? Has Josh answered that?
Yes, that would be great.
So I, I guess the easiest way to answer that on my end, the two biggest things I'm waiting on are my upgraded HEPA filter, or my upgraded filtration units, my HEPA units. I checked in with the vendor. They were due to ship out this afternoon, which was the game plan. We should see those by the end of the week. And my staff will be all in to get those installed. Number two, we're waiting on our MERV rated filters. Again, we're using a MERV eight in all our HVAC units that have filters. Most, a lot of districts are looking to, and working to get to eight, and we're, we're working to get to an 11 or 13. So we're waiting on those. And then I guess lastly, one more thing we're waiting on is the beds and dividers for our secondary nurse rooms, which we ordered about six weeks ago. We got news today that those won't be shipped until in October sometime. So we're checking other options at this point in time while leaving that order as a go for the time being. So facility-wise, that's where I'm at. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Andy, this is April. Just a follow-up. Hearing these concerns, does this possibly jeopardize opening the hybrid model on September 14th?
Sure, Josh, go ahead.
So on my end, we will have the HEPA filtration units for the classrooms, which is the biggest concern on my end. I wouldn't be as concerned if I don't have the filters, the MERV rated 11 or 13 filters. Personally, I think the eight is going to get us moving in the right direction and, and has us moving in the right direction. And very thankful we've done those, those upgrades throughout our Honeywell projects over the last decade. And then lastly, although the bed and divider is an issue for the secondary rooms, personally, I think we can work around that, whether we pull a bed out of the primary room for the time being and/or concoct some sort of a divider to make that work.
Thank you very much.
Amy?
Can we just hear Patty's comment or answer to that question, please?
Yes.
Sure. I agree with everything that Josh said, and I would add that, you know, Josh is probably the most prepared facilities director after hearing and talking to lots of other folks. And I think the isolation rooms, everyone is sort of working on those as we go, and I don't know of anyone else that has extra beds and dividers for an isolation room. So I think that that's a bonus, and it's great that they're on their way, but I don't think it would prohibit us from having students in the building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, this is Anne. I just have one more quick question.
Sure.
So our next meeting is 9:15. So if we come back to our next meeting and we're already day two into hybrid, if we fit the full return, will we stay in hybrid for one full month, or will we revisit that on 9:15?
So I mean, that would be, so we, we do have a vote that was approved, or a motion that passed, rather, to do one month of hybrid. So I, I believe procedurally, to override that decision, somebody who voted in the majority of that approved motion would have to make a motion to reconsider due to current circumstances. And then we could modify the plan. So, yeah, I mean, we, we certainly could. We would just have to do it right.
Yes, yes. No, I just had a couple of parents ask that question, so thank you.
And another thing I think that we need to talk about probably next time around regarding this matrix and everything is, and I would certainly welcome all the administrators' input on this question when the time comes, is what does this switch look like, right? If we have a meeting or if we get informed that, hey, we're in the green now, I, I assume we can't decide that on a Tuesday night and start Wednesday morning in the green. So I think we, as a board, kind of need to discuss that with the admin and see what they're thinking about timeframes to shift these models. Do we start the following Monday? Do we, never. We probably, it's not on the agenda, so we maybe don't want to go too deep into it, but I think that's a discussion we need to have.
I did.
Kind of is on the agenda. Patty, were you just going to talk about like the page two stuff?
Yes, sorry. Yeah. Yeah, so it is on page two that if the models move, there would be a two-week transition period.
Two weeks, okay.
And Andy, it's Jean. And I think that was, when I made that motion, that was my intention, because I don't want to have a situation like we did back in March, going from one plan to another over a weekend. You know, we've got the two weeks of remote going in. Then we'll have hybrid starting up, assuming everything goes to plan. Give that a roll, things, see how things are going, have, you know, students in the building. So anything short of that one-month period would be irresponsible on our part for getting them back full. I mean, on the 15th, they will have just started hybrid. So, you know, really won't have any input as to what anything will look like until the following meeting after that, which is whatever, two weeks later. At that point in time, if we make a decision to go full open, then that gives administration and staff two full weeks to move in that direction. And now we've worked out the bugs for remote, we're working out bugs for hybrid, we'll be able to move back and forth, hopefully. I know it won't be seamless or anything like that, but hopefully in, you know, with a little more ease than it happened back in earlier this year, so.
Great, thanks. Still have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion around any part of this document before we go ahead and vote on that?
I'm ready to call the vote.
All right. So I'm going to try to get this right. Somebody correct me if I don't. I'm paraphrasing and trusting that Sandy has the full language, but there's a motion to approve the matrix, but reserve control to the board to make decisions as necessary and pending the clarification of the community spread box. Is that acceptable to the members?
Yes.
Okay, then on a roll call vote, April?
Yes, as long as that clarification is that it's Merrimack County, which we discussed. Thank you.
Anne?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so the next bullet point we have under 3E is student screening. Patty, I'll let you take that away.
Sure. So we've had a lot of conversation about student screening and there's mixed research. I know it's something that makes people more comfortable, but there's also guidance from the CDC talking about the effects that it could have, you know, for students who can likely carry fevers for all sorts of reasons and weighing the risk of the screening versus the unnecessary excluding of children from school if it's not a symptom of COVID. The guidance from Dr. Chan and from the CDC is that parents screen the children before they come to school. That being said, there are people that really want that extra layer of checking when the students are coming into the building. That's something that we'll probably need to talk to when we're talking, and talk about when we're talking about bargaining later on in the evening. I think that the elementary and middle school have ways of making it a little bit more doable than the academy with, you know, 750 students coming in, well, half of them, coming in five different entrances and a lack of staff and thermometers to try and get that screening accomplished. It would be much more difficult. But on the other hand, high school students are able to answer the self-screening questions much more easily than an elementary-age student could, so.
Great. And you don't, you don't need any decisions from us, correct?
I mean, it's, if the board wants to take any official action, that's certainly within your right, but I think it would probably be best if we waited until the end of the evening to have some more conversation about it.
Okay. Does anybody have anything they want to add at this point before the further conversation later?
Thanks, Andy. Yeah, this is Amy. In the, can you just remind me, I'm sorry, I don't remember all the ins and outs here, but did the board vote on the re-entry plan? You know? No, okay.
No.
Okay. But that's all I wanted to clarify for now.
Okay. Anything else before we move on to busing? All right, thanks, Patty. So we did add a bullet point under 3E for busing. I believe it was Anne that asked for that. So Anne, do you have specific questions, or did you just kind of want to recap of the situation?
Yeah, I wanted to see how we have set the guidelines for the busing for students. I know different districts in Deerfield that they have to supply their bus drivers with the protected masks. I didn't know if that has to do with us or not.
So Dale is providing the drivers the mask, but they will not be providing extra masks on hands for students that may forget them. So I think the plan is for the schools to have, you know, a Ziploc bag with a few extra masks so that if a student comes to the bus stop without one, they could be provided with one. I think our, our bigger concern right now, and Deerfield has been in a much tighter bind because their kids are coming back tomorrow, and some of our other districts are already back. But we have concerns about the bus driver shortage, and right now Pembroke is still three bus drivers short. So it's really important for us to get the list of students that have indicated that they want transportation, get the addresses to Kelly so that she can get those routes firmed up and hopefully be able to accommodate all of our riders. Luckily enough, right now, we have school, enough schools that are remote that she's able to take drivers from other places. But there's still a concern for, for bus driver shortage, for sure. I guess worst-case scenario she mentioned at the Deerfield meeting would be if there was no other option to do a couple of runs and go get the students that they weren't able to get if there continues to be a shortage and we can't fit everyone on the buses. Deerfield did decide to do one student per seat, so up to 26 riders. That includes siblings, though, so it doesn't, you don't add a rider if there are siblings doubled up in a seat. It's a max of 26.
So my other question is, has our bus coordinator looked to see the amount of students that they have through those cohorts? If we have enough buses that we wouldn't have to do a second one, or we wouldn't have to do one child per seat?
I haven't heard back from Kelly, Anne, that she's finished with the routes in Pembroke. I know today she got Deerfields done and they start tomorrow. So I think this has been a really tight schedule on getting things done. Amber's been checking in with her daily, but I have not received the Pembroke routes yet.
Okay, thank you. So the students will be wearing a mask and the driver will be wearing a mask? And do you think they have assigned seats also?
They will, and the intention is to, so sometimes the buses are divided by age, and the older students would be in the back of the bus. But they're not doing that. They're going to fill the bus from the back to the front as the stops go along. So regardless of your age, whoever gets on the bus first walks all the way to the back, and then it will be filled back to front, so that students aren't walking back and forth and next to each other.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much, Patty.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions about busing while we're on the subject?
Will we just have an update on the, on the, on the 15th meeting? On how the buses worked?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Andy, this is April. How about any updates for use of the buses during the remote period of instruction? I think lunches was just, that part was discussed, how the buses are being utilized during remote. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I know I was leaving Three Rivers and I saw two buses parked out front and some food service staff with bags, so I can only assume that that's where they were headed. I know that Amber has been working with food service staff and Dale to make sure that all the students could receive lunch. There was an issue with students that lived a little bit further out and maybe in Hooksett, and we made arrangements. We have a van for the food service program that we've used to cater to the other schools and to strong foundations, so they're going to use that van to get to the students that the bus company wasn't able to. So everybody that needs a lunch will get one.
Great. Other busing questions? Fantastic. So we'll move on to agenda, item 3F, live streaming of board meetings.
So we've had a couple of other boards asking the same question about live streaming. So I asked Dean to do a memo. He had one of his associates do the memo to write up the right rules and regulations around live streaming, and it's, I'm glad Amy has a law degree, because I was going to say you need a law degree to interpret everything. It's very confusing, and there are lots of different laws at play. I knew just from the, the case that we had with the Office of Civil Rights about our website, that there were issues that, and we, and rules that we needed to follow, so I thought this memo would be helpful to get out to you to take a look at, because we're going to be looking at that once the emergency order is no longer in effect and we have to go back to in-person meetings. I know that was something the board was interested in doing and pursuing, was how we can have the public have an option to be, you know, either live stream or, or phone access or something. So this memo was provided by legal counsel, and you can take a look at it, and Amy can interpret it for us at the next meeting.
Great. I appreciate that. I read that, and yeah, it's, it's not fun to get through, but the end with options was very nice, so I appreciate this getting pulled together. Other comments about live streaming of board meetings?
Amy, I need to get paid more than $600 a year if I'm going to do a legal interpretation of the laws here. I also, I liked the, I bookended it. I liked the summary up top. I liked the suggestions down the bottom. And I just was curious about taking those conclusions a step farther and figuring out like, okay, is there a, you know, a phone line at the Pembroke Academy or at any of the schools, at the library that has this, I don't have it on my screen now, but whatever the ITY or IYT.
TTY, I think.
Thank you.
Sorry, just taking notes. Patty or Josh, do you happen to know offhand if that's available in the library right now?
I'm not sure about the academy. We used to have it at Three Rivers. Do we still have that capability, John?
I think I may need to defer to Josh.
And I'm going to defer to the other Josh, because I don't know that that's true, specifically at PA. We went through a phone upgrade a year or two ago.
Melissa Gershaw has her hand raised. Mrs. Burschur has her hand raised too. Karen, do you have something you want to add? Go ahead. Yeah, you're, you're still muted though.
Yeah, um, we did use to have one at the academy because I know we have utilized it um in the past. So I don't know if it was um taken away when the upgrade happened, but there was one at the academy um that was easily accessed from, um, I believe the office, but maybe a couple of other places.
Uh, Mr. Burrow, if you're still with us, do you, you have information that might help? We're gonna hit everybody.
Are you not looking to that for you and get back to you?
Okay, yeah, that'd be great information to have for, for next meeting. Um, I think it's, it's definitely something that we're hearing from a lot of places. You know, we have fifty-five people on the phone tonight or on, online tonight and we're not even talking about sports, so um, I think giving, giving people every opportunity to access the meetings is, is a great idea. So we should definitely continue this conversation. Uh, anybody have any other comments tonight?
This is April. If we're gonna talk about accessibility, I think we need to forward think to our um public school district meeting that we hold every year. And there's also an opportunity to enhance accessibility there so that when there are presentations, there are visual uh slides that can be shown because if you're hard of hearing, you may not be able to hear what exactly a speaker is saying. So I do think it'd be very helpful to have a visual presentation with slides to help. Thank you.
Any others? All right, then with that, we will uh move on to agenda item number four, continuing business um and listen to our board reports. So um, SAU Board slash Exec Board, um, Ann? Sorry, Ann, you're still muted.
Sorry. Um, we have one scheduled for next week and we have not had one um since we went remote in March.
Thanks. So that's the SAU Exec Board. Um, the SAU full board, like I mentioned, a couple of days after our last meeting. Um, sorry, I don't have the date in front of me. It was Thursday. And we had kind of a general discussion just of where everybody was at, how reopening plans were looking. Um, like I said, we shared this, Patty shared this matrix out um for the other districts to take a look at. And um, I'd encourage you, if you're interested, to go and look at the meetings, uh, the minutes of tha- that meeting. Um, there were some discussions about how the SAU schools can work together, how the area schools can work together. Um, some discussion around the topic of the AREA agreement and how old it is and maybe it's time to take a peek at that. Um, so if you're interested in those topics, I encourage you to take a look at those meeting minutes. Um, so the AREA committee report, I put down committee members because I think there's three on there, right?
There's two, April and Ann.
Is that all? I think Jean's on there too.
On this year.
Jean didn't want to join us. He's on CIP.
All right, I'll double check, but uh, April or Ann?
Um, so this is April. The next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September eighth at six PM at Pembroke Academy. Um, I am unsure that I'm going to be able to make a six PM meeting because of a family scheduling conflict. Uh, I will do my best to be there. I may be a little late, um, but six PM meetings are very hard for me to get to.
Okay, um, Ann, are you gonna be able to make that one?
No, um, when um Kathy was sending out the invitations, I told her nine-eight is uh election and I'm not able to.
Oh, that's right.
A lot of people said that they could make this Thursday, so I'm very concerned that the area agreement has to do with Pembroke Academy and they don't go around what Pembroke can attend.
Okay, um I will look to see. I was almost positive there were supposed to be three of us on there um from Pembroke.
Andy, there are, there are. Uh, it's April, Ann, and Amy.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. So.
I'm planning on attending that meeting.
Okay, and I may attend too as just a bystander then. If the, if we're gonna have attendance problems, but um I would definitely encourage any of you that do attend to bring up Ann's point. Um, you know, I don't know that it is our building. I don't know that we're I don't wanna say we're more important than anybody else, um, but I think just in general that we should be striving to have these meetings at a time when the most people can attend. Um, with that said, I haven't made an MBC meeting yet this year because my schedule's been so hectic, so.
Well, Andy, and, and also just to point out at the last full school, um, SAU school board meetings, they, all of the districts was, except Deerfield, had expressed they would like to have this conversation with, with Pembroke. And I'm concerned that, I, I appreciate you and Amy being able to fill in at a short notice, but I've told her weeks and weeks ago, election, nine-eight and eleven-eleven, so eleven-ten, excuse me.
All right, um sorry, I lost my place. Budget Committee, um, that's us. So um Jean and I both had to miss the last Budget Committee meeting because it was the same night as the SAU Board Meeting, um, and it was important for us to attend that. We did um ask ahead of time for Amber to give us as much information as we could get to provide to the MBC. Um, there is a letter from Amber in the board packet tonight. And um, if I can find it, I will summarize real quickly. Uh, so basically, the surplus at the end of the year before funding warrant articles from the year, the, the fiscal year that closed on June thirtieth was seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Um, the warrant articles from last year said that we were going to deposit eighty-two thousand five hundred into various trust funds um as we usually do. So the total that will be returned to the town to offset taxes is six hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars. I'm sure that, you know, the MBC is turning their sights towards the coming year and what information we can provide um as far as possible savings or new expenditures or cares money and all that sort of thing. Um, it's, as everybody's aware, this school year's pretty up in the air, um, but Jean and I will continue to work with Patty and April, or Patty and Amber rather, too many A names, um, to get as much information as we can to take to the MBC. We definitely want the town to be in the loop as much as possible and, and have as much information as they can have um moving forward. So Jean, did you have anything you wanted to add on that front?
I just wanted to question, is this Patty, is this the official year end? Cause it still says total estimated.
Yes, so the document that I handed out at the SAU Board Meeting, I'm hoping that's the one you're reading from, Andy. I don't have it in front of me. Um, but Amber was able to close all of the books before September first, so she did get that done in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, this one's dated August twentieth. I'm, I'm pretty sure this is the same document.
August twentieth, yeah.
Andy, this is Ann. Can I just have, uh, I'm not sure if Amber's on tonight, but I, I have Patty relay the information that um, the selectmen were very happy with this listing um and, and as quickly as she got it out to them, so. And this was a lot of work for Amber, so can you say thank you for us? For the selectmen and also myself.
Great. Um, Pace Report, anything on that front, Jean? Uh-oh, we lost Jean. It's an empty room.
Yeah, let the dog out.
We'll co- we'll come back to him. Um
I attended the Pace Board Meeting.
Oh, great.
Yesterday. Um, and I forgot to bring the agenda with me to have it handy here. Um, as you all know, I'm new at this, and so for me, it was just mostly figuring out who's who and learning about the school. Um, with the entire SAU Board Meeting that happened, you know, ten or so days ago. Um, I'm impressed with the ease of nimbleness and administration when you have such a small population of students that you're serving. Um, they have been managing their finances eh great, what seems to me. They had talked about things getting a little close in terms of funding, maybe a year or two ago, and that for the past several months in a row, there's been something with a very small surplus, but a surplus. Um and they've increased staffing by, I think, a couple. Um, things, things seem.
Great. Um, I'll circle back to Jean when he gets back to see if there's anything he wants to add. In the meantime, um Hill Renovation Committee, I don't see Kevin Foss on the line and I didn't receive an update, so we'll skip over that one. Jean, Amy just filled us in a little bit about the Pace Board. Um, do you have anything you wanted to add? Were you able to attend?
No, I was not.
Okay. And then the last one is Principal Reports. Uh, I can't remember where I started last time. We'll go top-down this time, so Mr. Morris.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, it's been really nice having our staff in the building. Uh, and for them to engage with students, albeit remotely, I think that there was a significant sea change uh throughout the building yesterday, once uh staff started interacting with students and uh doing what they always wanted to do. So um, that was, that was really nice to see. Um, I do have to share that we uh will likely have a labor issue uh that we're gonna have to contend with. Um, and I, I wanna give you a little bit of information about that. We currently have uh, so currently, all of our students are um accessing remotely in a synchronous model. Uh, however, we do have a huge challenge ahead of us when we begin to have students back in the building because we have fifty-three students that have requested a full remote model accessing Pembroke Academy classes. And we have some significant challenges with offering full remote access for PA classes. One is certification issues. Uh, in some disciplines like science, uh, you need specific certifications in content areas like physics or chemistry. We only have one physics teacher. Um, students also have unique schedules. So in a middle school or an elementary schools, for the most part, students are all taking the same classes. Uh, and that is not the case at the high school level. They're unique schedules. Uh, and so it becomes impossible for us to designate one teacher as remote uh similar to what, you know, we've been able to do in other schools. So uh, we shared, I shared an expectation that we would provide a, a synchronous remote learning experience for these full remote students. Uh, and what I communicated was the only way we can provide a remote learning experience for our students seeking full remote is for that to occur synchronously with students in the classroom. Uh, the state reopening guidance document did state that it may be practical, uh it may not be practical to expect educators to simultaneously support both in-person and remote instruction. Any model dependent on educators performing double duty while possible in a short-term scenario would not be sustainable over a period of time. Frankly, I don't have any other options, given those other uh concerns I was sharing with you. Um, so this is in some ways, I think, a byproduct of something I was, you know, communicating a few weeks ago where it's very difficult for us to be all things to all people, uh particularly when those choices are on diametrically opposed, you know, ends of the spectrum. Uh, so uh, teachers are articulating that teaching remote students in addition to teaching students in class doubles their amount of prep work and diverts attention from both groups of students when done in a synchronous model. Uh, and so I don't have any firm resolutions at this point. Uh, this is something that um, I just officially received a document today. So there are a few potential uh resolutions that or components of a resolution that I wanna share with you because we may have to explore these possibilities. Uh, one is allowing more flexibility for when full remote students access their teachers, which will allow us to consolidate full remote students into sections that better fit a roster of only full remotes, full remote students when possible. So right now in a synchronous model, uh, we can't consolidate if a student is full remote period one with four students at our full remote period two. And if we could offer some flexibility with asynchronous for these fifty-three students, we can consolidate and address that issue. Um, in addition, you know, if we gave teachers the flexibility to uh work with these students in an asynchronous model, I think that that would also allow uh teachers the ability to focus on the students in the classroom uh with their full attention. And then when time is uh appropriate, they can focus on the full remote students with their attention. But what, what I'm hearing clearly from staff is that it is too difficult for them to try to do both, to, to meet the demands of both of those groups at the same time in a setting where they're accessing students remotely in addition to the students in their classroom. So uh, like I said, I don't have a lot of resolutions at the moment. I think one other component to consider would be we may possibly have to rework the master schedule to develop some full remote sections in some disciplines where we can do that, like larger disciplines like English, for instance, uh where possible, but this may mean that we're also changing student schedules for students that uh aren't full remote uh in order to give us the ability to to consolidate and create some full remote sections. So a pretty complex issue uh that, you know, it's one of those things where I think it's, it's not fair to a lot of people. Um, and this is just, like I said, it's kind of an impossible situation given our context.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Morris?
Andy, this is Ann. I have a, a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, any of the fifty-three students part of the CRTC? Cause I know that Concord is remote, full remote for at least the first semester. Is that correct?
Uh, so it's correct that Concord High School is full remote, but CRTC is not. Uh, the CRTC program is going to be in person. I believe there may be one or two classes in CRTC that are remote currently uh or will be when they start on the eighth. Uh, but they did have a separate decision-making process for CRTC. That was not part of the Concord High School or Concord School District uh discussion.
So do we currently have Pembroke Academy students attending CRTC right now in, in full?
Uh, well, we will. Um, so we will have at least a few. I don't have an exact number, but I know CRTC that are also full remote.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? All right, thanks, Mr. Morris. I appreciate you bringing all of that to us and letting us know where we're at. Um, very important for us to hear. Uh, Mr. Marston?
Good evening, everybody's. Um, well, we're off and running, that's for sure. Uh, we had uh, uh, last week, we did Panther Prep Day uh virtually for the first time and hopefully maybe for the last. But I think we had at least fifty students that came on for Panther Prep Day. Those of you that don't know what that is, if we typically have uh fifth grade students in the building for about three hours and go over scheduling, hand out lockers and get them acquainted with the building. Obviously, we couldn't do that this year, so we tried it remotely. Um, and like I said, we have about fifty students that joined that. Uh, it was a real modified uh schedule. Uh, and hopefully gave fifth graders a little opportunity to uh experiment or not experiment, well, maybe experiment with the uh, the whole process of uh logging on to get into the school. Uh, then Monday, we did a test run for the whole building. Uh, fifth grade, uh, because they'd done Panther Prep Day, they really just did a homeroom extension to uh answer more questions. Uh, what we're finding obviously is the younger the, the student, the uh more challenging the technology can be. Um, the rest of the building did a modified schedule for about ten-minute class periods and we ran through it, ironed out some of the bugs. Um, and then today we went live uh for the first time as a full schedule, a modified schedule. Uh, we do have some uh bumps in the road when it comes to uh technology, but we're working through those. Uh, some of the Chromebooks that we're using for staff are really not cut out for what we're asking them to do. However, we are, uh, we're on it. Our tech department is awesome and they've been really supporting us to make sure that happens. Um, I do wanna uh talk a little bit about that remote option, not unlike what Danded, although we're in a um, probably a better situation. We're still in a pretty uh, it's a close call with numbers, so I guess one of my, my concerns is, um, and I don't know if the, you know, how to address it, to be honest, with, with students changing between uh different models as we go. So remote is pretty uh, pretty challenging to be on a computer all day long. Uh, it is for staff and it certainly is for kids. So as, as we go, if students begin to request to come out of remote and go to hybrid, well, we're in the middle of hybrid. Uh, where we, we have a challenge with that, the way we're set up. Um, our other, you know, right now, we have one remote class for grade level and four in-person. And the four in-persons are, are pretty much maxed out as far as how many kids. So when we have kids that choose to come out of remote and try to get into hybrid, we have, we had, do have a challenge there. We also have a, a Um, we also have a somewhat of a challenge with staffing, uh, not at the extent that the PA does, but we certainly do have that challenge. Um, though those are things that, that um I think I've said it before, we don't know what we don't know. And as we're going through this, we're uh experiencing uh a few things that we have to adjust on the fly and we're trying to do so. Uh, I don't know uh if, I know other schools have uh set um some guidelines as to how and when kids can choose between models. Do you have to stay in it for nine weeks? Do you have to stay in it for three weeks? We've talked about it at other board meetings, but it's it's ha- it's hasn't become a problem, but I've had some inquiries. So it's just something that I want the board to be aware of as we go forward. Other than that, uh, considering what we're doing, uh, I thought today was relatively okay. It was, it's very challenging. And I, and wrapping up, I do, I do need to point out that uh what we're asking staff to do is extraordinary. And I can speak to the staff at Three Rivers. They have uh already, uh, they've been here for a week or so, two weeks. I've gone well beyond uh any of my expectations. We have to remember, we're expecting them to schedule and, and uh plan for uh full remote. And then in a week and a half now, we have to completely flip that and go to hybrid and the whole schedule changes again. And that planning is uh extensive and uh very, very tiresome. But they're, they're doing a great job in a tough situation and this is a really hard situation for everyone. I don't think anybody likes it. Uh, but we're, we're working hard towards uh meeting our goals of getting everybody back.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Marston? Letting him off easy.
All right. All right, Ed.
And elementary.
Hello. Um, so we kicked off our all aboard yesterday with our grade level orientations and we had phenomenal participation. I think we had on average um fifty participants per grade level and our enrollments are about sixty-five to seventy per grade level. So I thought we had a great turnout for that. Um, we got a lot of positive feedback about being able to push out more information. Um, and then today the teachers, and that was predominantly, we had a lot of parents on that to kind of help the kiddos in it. It was great to see all their faces. That was the fun part for all of us. Um, and then today the teachers jumped into having Google meets with um the kiddos. Um, and uh that was the highlight of their day. I saw a lot more smiles in the building because the kids, um, you know, they finally get to do what they love, which is to interact with the kiddos. Um, we've started our kindergarten all aboard, so we have our kindergarten students coming in on appointment basis to do the uh kindergarten assessment so that they're ready to go when we switch to the hybrid. Um, and that's been a lot of fun to get them in the building and to again, see those smiles with the staff and the students. Um, some of the challenges that we're facing and, and I, I've talked about it in previous board meetings is our internet and our bandwidth. So starting last week, we did some uh infrastructure trials to see how much we could tax our um capabilities. And that set us up for yesterday. And then so yesterday we had several times that um our internet would go down. But our team, I'm beyond thankful for our IT team. They have been rock stars in all of this and have jumped in and, and reset everything and it's on a minute to go. And I mean, they've been on it. So I'm absolutely thankful to them for that support. Um, and then today we did jump in and it was a little bit more troublesome because not only are we trying to have the simultaneous Google meets, which we figured out we can really only cap at seven people open at a time. So that would be seven computers open at a Google meet for the entire building. And um, what we would be looking at when we are full, you know, if, if we were full remote or uh even switching to a hybrid is at least needing at least twenty people or so on. So right now we're working on a very limited schedule. I have a schedule for all the staff, including all of our outreach services, our TLC building, our special ed services, um, our classroom teachers. So everybody right now is working on a very limited schedule. So I really do appreciate the patience that um and the grace that parents through this and understands that we want to be in front of our kids right now. And, and when that switch happens on the fourteenth, we will free up a lot of our bandwidth. Our remote students will get that full remote that we really had talked about. We mentioned that in the orientation. Um, so that's kind of the challenges that we're facing right now. And a, a little bit, um, I want to jump on what Mr. Marston said as far as moving from remote to hybrid. So we're, we're in a good spot right now that if we get a couple of people who want to possibly um go from remote to hybrid, that we'd be able to accommodate. But there would come a point where um it would start to tax the classrooms and uh we would no longer be able to social distance if we start putting additional kids in a classroom. So I do think I just want, again, you guys to be aware, like Mr. Marston said, um, to, to have that discussion as far as when we would be able to move um the kids from one to the other, because I do feel um after our remote orientation, some parents, you know, were concerned about the time commitment remotely because it is a large time commitment. Um, and then wanting to maybe come back into the hybrid model. Um, but uh overall, today was a great day. We had a lot of participation, a lot more smiles in the building. So we just want to keep that going.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions for Ms. Gary?
Uh, Andy, this is Ann and um I guess it's for the, all the principals. Is the percentage of the students that they were able to engage in, you know, for attendance?
Yeah, Three Rivers, uh, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they were, uh, they were, they were pretty good. Um, and from, from what I'm hearing, most kids were uh online. Uh, and if they weren't, it was because they were uh, having a hard time finding out where the next class was, but that was very few students. Um, I don't have the number in front of me, Ann. Uh, the one challenge that we are having uh for this, the staff have is you have, you have a class live, you have a lesson and you're trying to take attendance on, on computer screens. Um, that's, that's been quite a challenge, but they're, they're doing a great job trying to do that. Uh, and uh we also figured that the, the first couple of days, you know, the, the uh reporting is not going to be as accurate as we go. Uh, but it, it seemed as though there was a pretty good attendance rate.
Thank you.
I would, I would echo that as well. The um, uh, it, it was about one or two per class. Um, that did not show up today. We have had uh quite a few enrollments that have happened in the past week or so. And that's a little bit because it takes time for everybody to get over, um, to get all that in. Um, but overall attendance has been, has been fairly decent. Um, and as long as we get those last kiddos passwords in and ready to go, I think it'll um be even better.
Thank you.
I think having our abbreviated schedule yesterday, uh, just just to get everyone connected and introduce the students and the teachers, I think that was very helpful. We had a lot of uh, at least staff have been reporting to me that there were a lot of sleepy-eyed students at seven-thirty yesterday morning. Uh, and uh this morning as well. Um, but well-attended, uh, similar, you know, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but uh the numbers were encouraging that uh students are accessing their classes and, and we're well on our way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions uh for Ms. Gary?
Um, actually, it's for, for everyone. Um, as far as taking attendance goes, what are the requirements? Do they have to be on camera? Do they have to log in somehow just so you see they're there? Um, how does that work?
For us, they have to, if it's an academic class, uh, like English, let's say, um, the teacher takes attendance similar to as if they were in the classroom. Uh, we're not mandating that students have to have their cameras on. Uh, you know, I think there are some issues around that if we were to mandate that, but um, but they can engage, you know, just verbally to uh, you know, say that they're attending. Uh, and then they go through it that way. We have uh non-academic classes like open campus or our, you know, academic labs, like our study halls, for instance, where uh those are supervised by teachers on a rotation uh as part of our duty schedule. And so in that case, we have a Google form that students fill out uh to indicate that they've attended that. Uh, and that's really the best way we can do that when we have multiple teachers supervising the same class throughout the week.
Three Rivers is not unlike what the high school's doing. They are taking attendance every uh, every block that they attend. Um, and uh we are strongly encouraging folks to, uh, kids to use the camera. However, if there's a request not to, we're trying to be as flexible as we can. We do feel that uh a lot of times being able to see a kid's facial expression really helps us because they don't always raise their hand or any of that stuff. However, if people request to keep it off, we're trying to be as flexible as we can with that. Uh, but overall, every, every block they get, there is an attendance taken to make sure that they're there.
Um, pretty much the same here. Whenever um our teachers are tracking who's uh coming into the Google meets um on the face-to-face. And then we're also looking at um when we move into the asynchronous uh tracking through CSO, we can or their last logins are and their completion of work is timestamped as well with a date. Um, so we can track their participation on the uh asynchronous days going forward with that.
Um, I had a question for Ms. Gary and Mr. Marston. You both mentioned, um, you know, when we switched to hybrid, um, that we could have trouble with number of kids in class, hybrid, hybrid versus remote. Um, and the question led to kind of when can people switch? Um, I, I added that as on my notes, something we should discuss next meeting, but would you two in particular have a suggestion? Is it easier for you to have people stay in one mode until the end of a marking period? Is it something that, you know, do, do you have any sort of suggestion for us on that?
I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm pretty torn because I think we talked about it before. The, the simple answer is, is right now we're in pretty good shape. If everybody stays put, we're, we're in pretty good shape. The struggle that I have is if we get uh, you know, a family that calls in and says, look, remote is not working for us at all. And, you know, our kids are struggling to get on uh and they want to go back um to hybrid, for example, or even for all-in. Um, I, I'm gonna have a hard time saying, geez, no, you're gonna have to suffer for another three weeks for a month until we can, to change that. So I'm working on a way to uh have those kids come back. Uh, you know, they may not go into, without getting into a, a, a whole long list of details with the scheduling, if they can come back and go to, go to class, uh, maybe uh the remote class, uh, they might be there with a teacher or another kid and the rest of the class is remote. That's about the only way I can think of doing it and, and maintaining it until more and more kids decide to come back. The opposite is true also. We could have some kids that say, I don't want to do hybrid anymore. I want to go to remote. Frankly, that's a little bit easier to switch. Um, so I wish I had an answer. Uh, and that's, I think that's what I've been struggling with. Uh, I know some schools have said, you're gonna go nine weeks, you're gonna choose and you're gonna stay in there for nine weeks. I, I struggle with being that black and white with it.
I think on my end too, um, I'm in a good spot. We're in a good spot right now. Um, I, but I think we just need to be aware of if we get, I think we would get more people choosing to go from remote into the hybrid model. And then um our classrooms, each cohort every day, we can spit about nine kids in a classroom and still maintain our six feet social distancing. So what we've done is anytime, you know, right now we're working with parents to really solidify their placement. Um, it's just when we get to a point where each cohort would be capped at nine kids in a grade level, um, that would then, we would need to, we had talked about possibly doing a waitlist. Um, but I've also, so we did have a kindergarten teacher and a fourth grade teacher based on our enrollment and numbers who did become full-time remote teachers. So those grade levels, we would have to shuffle kids from remote to be able to put them back into the classroom. So it really is a fine balance and it's a numbers, uh, a numbers issue. Um, so again, like Mr. Marston said, there's not a com- a, a solid answer right now to it, but an awareness of it and then a possible discussion. Um, if, if we start to see that gap closing a little bit of what our options are.
Hey, thank you. Um, one more call. Any questions for any of our principals?
This is April. I actually have a question for um all principals. I just want to clarify based on community concerns. Um, did we hear that a student sharing their video or, or their image being seen is not required? And what you would like to see happen if a parent has concerns about a student sharing videos? Thank you.
April, could you define what you mean by sharing videos?
A student turning, being required to turn on their camera. Um, the school board members received an email and the the word that the parent used was demand.
Yeah.
Um, so I just want more information about that. I just want it clear that no student is required to turn on their camera. And um if, if something's going on, I'm sure, assuming you guys want to hear about it if a parent has to concern. So kind of best practice what you would like to do if someone had to concern about that.
I personally like the, the request to come to uh the administrative team and just request. Um, and that, if that's the case, then we'll certainly uh, you know, do what we need to do. I mean, I think it's that, I think it's that simple. I, like I said, we strongly recommend it for a number of reasons, but um if they feel like that's, that's an issue, then um, we will certainly work with the family to, to, to uh, you know, allow them to not have their, the video on or taken.
Thank you, Mr. Marston.
Yeah, I just echo that. I mean, it's certainly strongly recommended and encouraged, but it's not, it's not a mandate that we can enforce uh or or that we have mandated. Um, and that they should just reach out to us if, if that's an issue.
Thank you, Dr. Morris.
You're welcome.
At this time, we haven't had any, our kids uh, uh, have not had any issues with it yet, but I, it would anticipate if we do have it um, pretty much the same thing. It's not something we're mandating um or could enforce. Um, but we, I always ask if parents have concerns to reach out to us and we'll work with, to address those with them.
Thank you, Ms. Gary.
Great. Um, any other principal questions before we move on? All right. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Uh, we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is policy review. Um, we have a number of policies here on third reading. Um, do we have, is it, do we want to take these individually?
This is April. Yes, it'd be nice to discuss them individually.
Okay. Patty, do you have any input for us before we?
Um, so for the first policy on masks, I think Kathy did a brilliant job of trying to incorporate board member feedback and differentiate between who provided the feedback. So um, she has some suggestions from Ann in red. She highlighted in gray some suggestions that Amy had provided. Um, and then if, if, if she didn't capture those correctly, please let her know. And I'm not sure how you want to proceed with determining what feedback will be incorporated into the policies before you vote. So I'll let you take it from there.
Okay. Um, so let's go ahead and just take them in order. Um, I guess first of all, if we could just indicate if people are ready to take action. Um, so on ACAC, the Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy, are people ready tonight?
Andy, this is April. I'd like to make a motion that we accept um the policy ACAC Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy and Grievance Process.
Right.
This is Ann. I'll second.
Great. Um, do we have discussion around ACAC? There are some reddits in there, but for the most part, it's pretty much the way it came. All right, hearing none on a roll call vote to uh approve and accept policy ACAC Title IX Sexual Harassment. Um, April.
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. And next on the list is EEAA Audio Video Recording. A lot of just getting to that one myself. Okay, um, so this one's got some language from, um, one of the copies has uh some language from Amy and I assume that's the edited one. Um, Patty, can you clarify for me? One of these says they're both labeled EEAA, but one says video and audio surveillance, one says video and audio recording. I'm not sure what I'm looking at in the drive here.
The Pembroke School District policy is titled EEAA Video and Audio Surveillance on School Property.
Thank you. And that's got uh suggested edit from Amy in it.
Yes.
All right.
If I can just clarify, it's not really a suggested edit. It was a comment that I made.
Okay.
It's fine. It's just got plunked in there, but it is not suggested policy language. It's just me saying, um, making a comment on that fourth paragraph there. I'd be happy to propose language if others um feel the same way.
Andy, this is April. I would like to make a motion that um we approve the New Hampshire School Board Association. that we approve the New Hampshire School Board Association's version of EEAA as the Pembroke School District's policy.
Okay. Do we have a second?
This is Ann, I will second.
Thank you, other discussion?
So Patty, can you please advise if the school board, New Hampshire School Board Association has a records retention policy and if the school district already has a records retention policy?
Sure, we do have a records retention policy. I don't remember the code on it now, maybe EEAB or something like that. But we could certainly look at that policy, put it on the next agenda if you wanted to recommend something. I can tell you that the reference in here is directly attached to our camera system. So basically, it stays in the camera system until it loops and records over it. So we don't actually pull it out and retain it in any way. That is just a reference to however long our systems allow recordings to sit before it gets recorded over, unless we pull something to specifically look at it and may need to keep it for some other purpose. So I just wanted to provide that clarification. And then the, in regards to the School Board Association version, I don't have that with me and I don't have what the differences are. So I wouldn't be able to advise you on that version. I'm not, I know April mentioned at the last meeting that there was a difference, but I don't know what it is.
So with respect to records retention, I guess what I would be looking for in the version of the policy on the drive, that it would say in the sentence that says, the superintendent will consult with the necessary personnel to determine how and when such recordings should be deleted. I would love to have a cross-reference to the records retention policy. You know, in accordance with policy, blah de blah, you know, something like that. Just to sort of keep everything in harmony together, so that when you read them together, that they're consistent.
Amy, would you be, this is April, would you be comfortable approving this tonight? And then let's revisit it and just make that tweak that you're suggesting and edit that later? If we approve it tonight, it's with the intention to come back and add the policy reference that you're referencing?
Um, I'm, I could be if I got an understanding that this was really urgent. I don't think it is urgent. So I'd rather wait and just do it once and do it, not have to do it a second time, you know, within a close span of time.
So this is April, one thing that I would say is urgent about that is some language that talks about, our current policy states that students will be responsible for any violation of school rules caught on tape by cameras. And the school district, excuse me, the New Hampshire School Board Association's policy states all persons instead of limiting that to students. And I think taking in light what's been happening in another nearby, nearby school district recently, that is something that's an easy zip up that I think is important, just my two cents. Thank you.
Anyone else have input? There is a motion on the floor. All right, I believe the motion is to approve the NHSBA version of policy EEAA. So on a roll call vote, Jean? I didn't hear it, Jean, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I'm just now, I'm going back and forth in my mind. If we approve it the way it is, by April's motion, I think it, I believe it is, you know, of a certain urgency, I just don't believe it's urgent right now. I was almost of the mind to table it until the new language could be put in that Amy suggested. So I don't know what I can do right now, I was just kind of.
Can I just make a point?
I guess I'd like to make a motion to table it until we can put that new information, that new language in.
And I just wanted to make a quick point of order that the New Hampshire School Board Association recommended version is not current, is not in our drive for this meeting, right?
Yeah, that's the other.
No, I think it, yeah, I have it.
Yes, it is in the drive under the policy third review. It's a separate folder. It says policy third reading under the 9-1-2020 folder.
I do want to be clear with what we're looking at here. So I see one, it doesn't have any mock-up changes on it. It says EEAA Video and Audio Surveillance on School Property.
Yep, that, that has the NHSBA sample watermark in the background. That's the one April's referencing, I believe.
Oh, interesting, mine doesn't, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
See, I got, yeah, I'm. If whatever, this just.
I see it, okay. Thanks for clarifying. So we have three different versions in the drive.
Yeah.
We have the administration recommended, we have the one with my comment, and then we have the School Board Association recommended.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify one thing, Andy?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the, so it's not the administration's recommendation, we didn't touch the policy. I just want to make sure you know that, Amy, that it's just the existing policy.
Okay, so is there, there is a motion on the floor and second, Jean did make a motion to table that motion.
I'll second the motion to table.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I, I have to go with that because I, again, like with Amy, I didn't, I just, these things all of a sudden just popped up here. I was looking at them all, I have one and now I've got three. So something on my part, I guess, so that's why I'm not willing to move forward.
Okay, so I think first we have to vote on the motion to table the prior motion. So we will do that on a roll call vote. I'll start with Ann this time.
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
April?
This is the motion to table?
Motion to table, correct.
No, thank you.
And Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so motion carries, so we're going to table. The motion, I just want to make sure Sandy got, the motion that's being tabled is to approve the NHSBA version of this. And I want to try to make sure I'm clear on that next meeting when we pick this back up. Okay, so then we will move on to IMBA Distance Learning. So again, just clarify, I believe I see two of those in the drive. We've got the NHBA sample policy and then we have our Pembroke School current policy. Is there discussion on this or a motion to be made?
This is April, I'll make the motion that we accept the policy put forth by the New Hampshire School Board Association for IMBA Distance Education. Could I go ahead and state why?
True.
The reason that I am making this motion is because the New Hampshire School Board Association sample policy is, it's dated 2014. And the current one that, the current Pembroke School District policy is dated February 2007. Okay, so that's 13 years ago, so thank you.
This is Amy, I'll second that motion.
All right, discussion around approving or adopting, I suppose, the NHSBA recommended policy, IMBA for distance learning. All right, if there's no discussion, then we will take a roll call vote. Who have I not started with yet? Amy?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so motion carries and we will move on to the mask policy.
Andy, this is Ann, I just have a question. I've been going through a lot of our policies and I noticed, you know, with Kathy's help, you know, she put the information as in go by the dress code JICA. So I thought maybe if we could just take a couple of sections of that dress code and put it in here instead of saying, here's our policy but reference another policy.
Okay, we can take that as a proposed edit. There's a whole lot of them in here.
Andy, this is April, if I may. Ann, in looking through other proposals, it seems pretty standard that there's just a reference to the policy. And, and like that's a standard way of dealing with it. I don't know if it's because this is going to be such a hot policy that you're making that suggestion. Is that the reason? Thank you.
Yeah, I was just wanted to clarify that, you know, you know, inappropriate or offensive printing or gestured message, that was number six of the dress policy, the dress code policy. And then number eight, you know, if the student is wearing an inappropriate mask, it doesn't say, it, you know, is offensive, it doesn't say what we do. So I would like to put, will be asked to exchange it for a school supplied mask. You know, just things like that.
Andy, can I just make a comment on that?
Sure.
This is Amy and I know that, Ann, I agree that the change that you're suggesting would make the mask policy more user friendly. You know, you can just read all the information in one place.
Right.
But I am not in favor of that change because what happens then is if we change the dress code policy, then we have to somehow remember that we also need to then go change the dress code policy portion that we put into the mask policy. And that's, that problem is generally speaking, why you don't do that. Why you don't take excerpts of one policy and like plunk them into the other, even though doing so would make it so much more user friendly. So I just don't think it's a good process, even though I agree that it would provide a lot more information.
Just to reword the dress policy, dress code. This mask policy stands on its own. I'm just thinking, we talk about inappropriate information or gestures on our clothing that's not allowed. So maybe we would want to add that to our mask. I wouldn't suggest changing our dress code.
Yeah, no, I think what we want to do is we want to say something like, you know, masks are clothing subject to the dress code policy, blah de blah de blah de. And just leave it at that, but we don't want to add then, you know, and because of that, they can't have the offensive, you know, the language from the policy. But I'm all for adding that their clothes and therefore part of the clothing, you know, or their dress or whatever the right word is from the dress code policy.
This is April and the dress code policy is actually JICA dress code. I would support adding a reference to the policy with the identification code JICA dress code, so that someone can look up to see exactly what that policy is. And would that satisfy your request or concern?
Yes, and I do like Amy's wording, subject to dress code. But I wanted to find out, it doesn't really say what happens if the child has an inappropriate mask. Do we excuse the child for the day or do we give them an option to have an appropriate mask given to them from the school supply?
So typically, the consequence for behavior is left up to the school administration. We don't typically, that's where like the student handbook comes in. So if there's a violation of policy, each, each level may have a little bit of a different policy so that it's age appropriate. I think your intention is good, Ann, though, that there could be offered a solution to the problem.
Thank you.
And this is April, if you look at policy JICA dress code number eight, it says, students wearing inappropriate clothing will be sent to the office and will be asked to call a parent, so arrangements can be made so that they may change their clothes. Time missed from classes will be unexcused. So would a reference to that policy help answer that question, what happens if an inappropriate mask is worn?
Yes, I just wouldn't want to send the child home. I would want to give them the opportunity, like Patty said, you know, the administrator's given them an opportunity to exchange a mask. I just didn't know how that would be worded.
I was just gonna pick up on another one of Ann's comments. The two paragraphs that are highlighted that Ann wanted to know why these two paragraphs were in there. I, I've read it and had the same reaction. My action, my reaction wasn't strong enough to make a comment about it, but I would be all for axing those two paragraphs from this policy. You know, unless Patty feels like there's a, you know, a big, it's a lot of text to take out. So I'm open to like, there's something that we're missing here. But I think I'm in favor of cutting that out.
Yeah, I, you know, this is just a sample policy that the attorney passed along that other districts were working on. So it's absolutely appropriate to tailor it to our needs. And I know that Deerfield changed the second paragraph because I don't think that any of our boards found that remote learning was not effective. I felt like that was pretty strong language. So I don't have an issue with deleting those two paragraphs.
I agree. I'm wondering though, we've kind of jumped around. Would it be okay if we're gonna try to tackle this thing right now? Could I start at the top and kind of go through and we can hit each edit quickly? And if they, if we can come to a quick consensus on it, do so. And if not, maybe, maybe push that to whenever. But I just don't want to hit all of these out of order and make Sandy's life more difficult. So I'm looking for.
Can I, you're asking the question if that's how we can proceed? And I just wanted to make a, a alternate way of proceeding. I wondered if it would just be quicker to hit each person. Like, for example, my commentary would be that with the issues we just discussed, I'm in favor of this policy, including all of the revisions that we see in it.
Okay, you want to make a motion to that effect?
Well, I think we should hear the other four board members' thoughts. And if, if everybody feels pretty clearly, then yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Yep, okay, I, for, for what it's worth on my part, I believe that I agree with all of these edits as well, including removal of those two paragraphs. I guess, Jean, wanna jump in?
The only, I'm, I'm fine with pretty much everything removing the paragraphs. The only thing I have a problem with is basically right at the top. Cover your mouth and nose only with a disposable mask or cloth, cloth mask. Bandanas or neck gaiters are not allowed. If we've got people, you know, students and teachers coming with, you know, the cloth masks that somebody's made from, they purchased online, whatever the case may be, they're pretty much going to be the same material as the bandanas or neck gaiters. So if it's, you know, you're adding in bandanas or neck gaiters as far as a dress code thing, that's one thing. But as far as unacceptable face coverings, I think they're pretty much one in the same. As, you know, except maybe for the disposable surgical masks.
Thoughts on that from others?
This is April. I have concerns about limiting the mask and excluding the mask, bandanas, neck gaiters. I've looked at the recommendations printed and distributed by New Hampshire DHHS. It does say cloth-based coverings. The other big opposition I have into this is being this restrictive. We're not taking into account students or staff who may have sensory issues. And we may be putting up, we, we could be creating behavior issues, non-compliance issues just by being so restrictive. And so I would not be in support of limiting only to mask. Thank you.
Let's see, Ann, do you have thoughts, other thoughts on, I guess, the whole thing? Or what the specific line that Jean and April are addressing?
Yeah, my thoughts were when I put restricted bandanas and neck gaiters is for safety reasons. If kids are pulling at each other, they're, the face masks are gonna give away. The easy ones around, you know, around the ears are giveaway. Bandanas maybe not so much as an easy release and neck gaiters would not be either. So I'm just thinking safety for the children. That's the only reason when I put those in there.
Yeah, for what it's worth and, you know, different places say different things. I did read at least one report that reported. different places say different things. I did read at least one report that reported that neck gaiters specifically were non-effective. I don't know if that had to do with the material that they're generally made of, um, that, that kind of weird nylon-y stuff or what. Um, I did, I did see that in one report. I don't have strong feelings about this particular sentence. Um, I'd be okay with making it more general. You know, but I also, I kind of agree, I think Anne said earlier, if we have masks on hand in the school and, and any student is seen wearing something that um, administration deems as either inappropriate or ineffective. Um, it would be appropriate to ask them to switch it out for one that we can provide.
Andy, this is Amy. I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed mask policy. Defining a cloth face covering as anything that covers the mouth and nose, including masks, bandanas and neck gaiters. And removing the two paragraphs that are marked in light blue, which are the third and fourth paragraphs of the proposed sample policy. And making sure to keep in that mat fit cloth face coverings are subject to policy J I C E for J I C A for the dress code. And other than what I just mentioned, incorporating all the other edits in the policy that is um, provided for this board meeting tonight.
That was a mouthful.
Amy, can I ask when you say cloth face coverings? Can we define that as a mask? Because otherwise if kids, I have teenagers, they're just going to pull their hat down over their face or they're just going to pull their t-shirt up.
Right. Um, no, what I specifically proposed was that a cloth face covering included a mask, a bandana or a neck gaiter that covers the mouth and the nose. Cause what I'm hearing is the majority of the board doesn't feel strongly about um, limiting it to a mask.
Thank you. Um, this is April. I'm just looking at the um, flyer put out by N H D H H S, which defines a face cloth, a cloth face covering. And it says, is any well-secured cloth like a bandana scarf or homemade mask that covers your mouth and nose? How is that language if we borrow that?
I would be amenable to adding um, well-secured. We've already got in there, covers the mouth and nose, but I would be willing to add in well-secured.
Thank you.
Thanks for that reference.
April, could you please um, copy paste that and send it to Sandy so she has it?
Sure.
Uh, thank you. Um, so I, we don't have a second yet, so any motion? There we go. Okay. Uh, any other discussion before we take a vote on this proposal?
Andy, this is April. I thought we were all going to go through and discuss our concerns before a motion was made.
I'm sorry, did I miss you?
You did. Um, we were only asked to comment on Jean's concern about the description of a face covering. Um, I have major concerns with two pieces of this policy. Um, the first piece is the part that references N H R S A two hundred colon thirty-nine. And that policy is specifically about exclusion from school. This is something that I mentioned at our previous school board meeting. I am not comfortable when we are providing a remote instruction um, model for children to be excluded from school. I would like language to reflect that they will be provided a remote option if available instead of just totally excluding a student from school. Um, I would also like to hear some discussion about um, mask requirements based on grades. You know, a kindergartner through a third or fourth grader is going to have a harder time keeping a mask on than someone in a higher grade. I did do some research, um, because I think it's important to borrow where we can. And S A U twenty-six, uh, Merrimack School District had kind of the pol, it's almost the same policy we're discussing tonight. And they actually pulled out kindergarten through third grade and fourth grade through twelfth grade. And um, I would just ask, may I read the justification in the separation for kindergarten through third grade?
True.
Does it be amenable to that? All students in kindergarten through third, grade three shall be taught the proper use of a mask. Students in kindergarten through grade three shall not be required to wear a mask or face covering, covering, but shall be encouraged, encouraged to wear a mask when social distancing is less than six feet. Nothing herein shall prohibit a parent from requiring that their child wear a mask. However, enforcing that requirement shall be the responsibility of that child's parent. Parents of students in kindergarten through third grade shall inform the district in writing if they do not wish their child to wear a mask. Um, I think this is important considering some conversations we've had in the past about compliance with students, young students wearing their mask all day. So I just ask, would you be willing to entertain a conversation on grade levels and different mask requirements?
Anybody like to respond?
Andy, may I just say something quickly?
Sure.
Um, so Dean initially had sent two policies. One was differentiated by grade. Um, and he sent a follow-up email saying that he could no longer recommend the gradated policy um, because of more information regarding spread. And I mean, you know, April, April did research and I don't have that. Um, but I just wanted to pass along his concern about um, not having masks on the great primary grades. Um, and I just also do want to mention that we do have some bargaining issues and that if we were going to change mask requirements, that probably would have an impact as well.
Amy, did you have a comment?
Um, yes, and it, Patty partially addressed it. Um, on the grade distinctions for masks, I was going to ask if it would be appropriate to hear from the principals as to what their thoughts are. But sort of even before that, again, I'm sorry to keep playing the newbie card, but is my understanding correct that when the board is considering a policy like this, it's not necessarily the case that all the principals have reviewed this and, and, and like what, what we see doesn't necessarily reflect their input on what they'd like the policy to be. Is that right? Okay. Um, so then I would like to hear from the principals about a grade distinction on masks. Um, I also will say though, you know, of course, with respect, I disagree with April's point about the language about two hundred thirty-nine. Uh, there's nothing in this proposed policy that says that the student would be excluded from receiving educational instruction. It just says that they would be um, removed from the school building based on state law, um, based on my proposed, proposed revision. Um, and that they can't come back into the building until they comply with the mask requirement. So that, that in no way excludes them from receiving remote education during that time.
It would be nice, this is April again. It would be nice because not everyone who reads this policy is going to look up these individual statutes that we referenced that remote instruction may be available for those students.
Yeah, I, I would have no problem adding that in.
Thank you, Amy.
Um, principals, do you mind jumping in real quick on your thoughts on differentiated masking um, by grade level?
I think I'll jump in on this one first. Um, I, I think Patty kind of alluded to, it's a larger conversation as far as um, with the teachers specifically. I can tell you that what we have put in place is to make sure that we are working with kiddos. Um, so far we've seen success with the kids that have come into the building with their masks. I know it's a few of them and it's a short period of time. Um, but we are working with them on that. Um, they've done a, a great job with it. Um, we also understand developmentally, our kindergartners might need that additional mask break. So looking at uh, taking a shorter instructional time and then going outside um, to take the mask off and then coming back in, having that uh, type of thing built in. And then obviously as the grades go higher, that expectation, um, they might be able to have the mask on for longer. So when we looked at it, it was what do we, what support do we need to provide so that the kiddos could wear the mask? Um, and that's really where we've uh, kind of focused our energy and thoughts on that. But I do think it's a bigger conversation um, just outside of um, as far as like teacher opinion and, and things like that, um, with the masks.
Thank you.
Differentiate between the grade levels, uh, nine through twelve uh, for our mask policy.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Now, I would say the same thing as the Three Rivers. Uh, we feel that uh, fifth to eighth grade, uh, they can all successfully wear a mask.
Thank you. Um, so we do have a motion on the floor. Continued discussion?
I'd like, I'd like to amend my motion, but I just need a couple of seconds to pull my thoughts together.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll wait for Amy.
Okay.
Got it?
Yeah, I got it.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'd like to amend my motion to say, I think this is what I wanted to say. Um, I move that we adopt the sample mask policy as follows. And Sandy, I will email it. Um, number one, cloth, cloth face covering means a covering that is well-secured and covers the mouth and nose, including masks, bandanas and neck gaiters. Number two, remove the two light blue highlighted paragraphs. Number three, face coverings are subject to J I C A dress code policy. Number four, if a student is removed from the school building based on this policy, remote instruction may be offered. And number five, aside from those four points, all the other edits in the proposed policy.
Billy, uh, Jean, I think you seconded it. Do you still?
Second, yes, sorry.
Thank you. All right, um, any other discussion? All right, um, on a roll call vote then to approve the policy with the modifications that Amy mentioned. Um, again, on a roll call vote, I will start with Anne.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I think that was a no. I just want to make sure.
No.
Thank you. Um, April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I M E S, motion carries, policy's approved. And we have one more. Um, K F, it's our facilities use policy.
So I would, um, Josh added some comments that he sent along to us that have not been incorporated into this policy. So I'm hoping that we can do that between now and the next meeting so that his thoughts are, are right in there as edits and I can bring it back to you.
Okay, is uh, board members okay with, with moving um, K F to our next meeting?
This is April. Absolutely. I think Josh's feedback is imperative.
Great.
And I had quite a few comments that I went through our other districts that were missing. And um, Josh did tell me where I could find the application. So we have a lot of information that is missing, like open flames and, you know, um, no gambling. So I would like to be able to send that to Patty and see if that fits in there. Maybe I'm just not seeing it.
Okay. Yep, if you, uh, you can send it to her, you can send it to me. I'll send it to her, whatever you want to do.
This is April. Would it be possible to get it in the drive? I think it would be interesting for all of us to take a look at and take into consideration. Thank you. Was that a yes or no? No answer? Getting it in the drive?
I think I muted myself halfway through. Yes, I will absolutely get that in for you.
Thank you so much.
Great. Okay, um, so we will talk about K F next time around. I added it to my list. So with that, we will move to agenda item six, informational items. Patty, do we have anything?
Yes, I just need to grab my agenda again. Um, I'm not sure if Josh is still with us, but I wanted to give him a, a huge shout out because he was able to get our internet construction costs dropped um, from seven thousand dollars to two thousand dollars. So for the Hill School um, build out cost, that was a five thousand dollar reduction. So thank you for that. Um, I wanted to update you that we did get a response from Dean, providing us assistance with our athletics waiver. So I sent that along to Fred and I know that he worked on that today. So our waiver will have um, attorney input as requested. And I wanted to give you a little bit of a budget update if I can find it um, in my mess now that I've one second.
Sorry, as you were taking a look for that, I just was curious, which Josh helped save the district five grand?
Barubi, although Coughlin has saved us money as well, but this one was on Barubi.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Um, so for our budget, as you know, we had started the fiscal year with the budget frozen and all purchases needed to be um, run through the S A U office through Amber and I. Um, everyone's done a really good job, but just wanted to let you know that we, for obvious reasons, we had to open some things up. We opened up some supplies. Um, we're trying to be careful that we're not ordering supplies for the entire fiscal year, but that we're just ordering things as we need them, knowing that some of our P P E supplies are probably going to overextend um, throughout the year. I also did approve some um, technology replacement and some software subscriptions. So trying to keep in mind that we want to defer as much as we can into later in the year, but also that we do need to uh, proceed with operations. So just to give you an update, we have um, out of our budget of twenty-six million, three hundred some odd thousand dollars, we've spent approximately uh, two point four. And we have encumbered another thirteen million. And encumbered just means like we've booked all the salaries and all the, the costs that we know about um, upfront. We have booked those for the year. So remaining right now, um, that's not encumbered and not spent is about ten point seven million. So it's early in the year, but I just wanted to keep you updated.
Andy, I have a quick question for Patty.
Sure.
Um, I have a lot of parents asking, um, in the budget, we have the three D printers. Were those already ordered? Are those still on hold?
I do not have that at hand tonight. I can certainly look into it and, and get that information to you at the next meeting, but I don't have that level of detail with me. Sorry.
And did we hire the four paraprofessionals?
Yes, those were already hired. Um, when you asked last time. Yes, sorry. I didn't get back to you on that.
Thank you.
This is April. Um, I just have a question based on some uh, questions that I've received in the community. Um, just want, could you speak to the budget freeze and if that affects um, hiring staff?
Um, it doesn't affect hiring staff unless we have deemed that we can proceed without replacing people. Um, but it certainly wouldn't preclude us from replacing, um, you know, like special education paraprofessionals. Um, I think we've replaced all of our open teaching positions if we've been able to. So um, it hasn't had an impact on staff.
Thank you very much.
Andy, I just have one more question.
Sure.
Do we have our um, hourly employees all working as in the food service?
I don't know that, Anne, but I can ask Donna and get back to you. Um, I know we certainly have some of them working, but I, I don't know to what extent. But I can um, ask our food service director and get back to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the informational items presented? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, um, our second public comment period. Looks like Mr. Barubi has decided to stick around for the evening. Thank you very much. Um, so once again, as a reminder, if you're on your computer and you have a comment to make, please use the raise hand button. Um, it's in different locations on different devices, so I can't really help you find it. But if your hand is raised, Mr. Barubi will recognize you. If you're called in on your phone and you've got something to say, just hang tight. And towards the end of the fifteen minutes, we'll open those phone lines up and I'll give everybody there a chance to speak if they wish. Um, so Josh, if there are hands raised, we can go ahead. Uh, so Josh, if there are hands raised, we can go ahead.
Okay, uh, Brian G, you're on the floor first.
Thank you. This is Brian Gleeden from Pembroke. Um, as expected, the positive case in Bedford was brought up. According to WMUR, the student contracted COVID at a sports camp. As a reminder, this board voted yes on resuming sports. For all intents and purposes, the student was performing an activity that this board finds acceptable. Contact tracing was performed and Bedford resumed as planned with no delay. Considering it's taken six months to get a return to school plan, which I and many parents I speak to consider that to be four or five months too long, please don't let one outlier case further delay a process of planning a full return. As the experience so far and for at least the next two weeks is going to be the same as the pandemic learning was last year for my child and all children at the Hill School. Um, furthermore, there are families in town that are paying upwards of $160 a month for remote learning plans, or excuse me, remote learning camps, where they're spending 15 minutes remote learning and being used as a daycare. Our children need socialization and they need to return to work as, or excuse me, as return to school as quickly and safely as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Gene Goss, you're next.
Gene, you son of a gun.
That concludes, uh, the hands that I see up right now. Uh, we do have five call-in phone numbers.
Okay, um, why don't you go ahead and hit them all? All right. So if you're on the phone, your line is unmuted right now. If you would like to speak, please just state your name and I'll recognize you. All right. Uh, I think you can close those up, Josh. And if you want to glance once more quick and see if there are any hands?
I do not see any more hands being raised.
All right. We will move on to agenda item number eight. Um, Patty, help me to make sure, but I believe that we have need to go into non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 91 dash eight colon three, Roman numeral two. Uh, long letter A for the top.
Nope, we need to go in under B, which is the hiring of any person as a public employee. And letter C, which is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board.
Great, thank you. Um,
I'll make a motion to go into non-public pursuant to B and C as noted.
Thank you. All right, on a roll call vote. Um, Gene?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anne? Is Anne, Anne, are you there? Wait for it.
I do see her.
There she is. And we have a motion going to non-public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
And I guess so, we'll enter non-public session at 8:48. Everybody's back in. All right. Um, so we'll move on to agenda item number nine, appointments, resignations, and retirements.
Yes, I would like to nominate Jennifer Coletti as art teacher at Three Rivers.
This is April.
Go ahead, April.
Okay, this is April. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the superintendent's nomination of Jennifer Coletti as the TRS art teacher.
This is Amy. I'll second.
All right, I'm on a roll call vote. Um, Gene?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes, but I thought we weren't able to say people's names.
We can. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
I know, that's why I was confused. All right.
I know.
I think Amy is the last one left.
Yeah.
And myself, and I am, uh, yes. Thank you. Um,
This is April. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, on a roll call vote.
Um, Andy, this is Anne.
Sure.
On the agenda, this is our next meeting's the 22nd, but isn't it the?
Good catch.
Oh, you're, it is the 22nd. Um, looking, let me look at your. Yeah, it is the 22nd and then two weeks after that is the sixth. So there is a three-week gap in this one.
Why don't we want the 15th? Because that's the day after we go.
Yeah. You would need to change it because it is on the calendar as the first and the 22nd right now.
Yeah, I think we changed it already though, because I think originally it was, there were, well, not this one. I think, I think our current meeting, I think was originally scheduled for the eighth. I think it was eight and 22. Um, so I would.
So you want to do the 15th?
I would support that. Uh, I think I need a motion for it though.
I make a motion to change our September 22nd meeting, school board, Pembroke School Board meeting to September 15th.
Second.
Gene, BB.
Okay, um, so moving the meeting from the 22nd to the 15th on a roll call vote. Uh, Anne?
Yes.
April? Gene?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. And I think we already have a motion to adjourn. So on a roll call vote, Gene?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, so at 9:29, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank everybody for joining us. Remember to stick around.
Thank you.